Good evening. Welcome to the September 17th meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Ayana, would you call the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Adkins.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Bollard.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adkins, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
Yes. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehopes people, and their successors, the Talilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes. There is one correction I'd like to offer, which is the final paragraph. It should read, "Commissioner Chatters suggests that the interurban trail is underdeveloped, et cetera." If that is a friendly amendment, then we should be good to go on that. Are there other corrections? Do we agree that that's a friendly amendment?
Seems friendly enough.
Okay. Any objections to approving the minutes as amended? Okay, then the minutes are approved. And with that, we're on to reports and comments. Commissioners, any reports? Okay, we'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, good evening. Commissioner York Stevens, Wajda, Planning Director. The only report I have for you today is that the birthing centers legislation that the Planning Commission recommended out on August 6, I think it was, went to the city council. They had their three readings, a public hearing, and adopted the legislation as proposed. They did, as part, you'll like to know that they asked about the contours of the discussion at the Planning Commission, and at least one of the council members recommended or mentioned, kind of relying on your first look at it. I did pass along that I had encouraged that since this was council legislation, that some of the questions had to do with why just birthing centers and maybe a desire to look at the broader set of limitations on ground floor uses, but I had encouraged not expanding the scope and letting at least this one get back to the council in a timely manner. They appreciated that advice and discussion out of the Planning Commission. And yeah, so your work is appreciated. Birthing centers was adopted and effective, and we actually heard from quite a few supporters of the legislation and some businesses that were looking to locate and take advantage of it in downtown Everett in short order. That's it for today.
Excellent, thank you. We now have an opportunity for public comment. To those of you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone, or if you're calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comment, I'll ask if anyone wants to speak. If you're participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again. If you are in attendance and would like to comment, please fill out a speaker sign-in sheet located on the table by the door. Doesn't appear that we have anyone in person. Ayana, do we have anyone remotely?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we're ready to move on to urban form, the urban form element.
Great.
So, on your agenda, we've got the urban form element and the design and development goal alignment. Added two sections to that that are underneath and within the urban form element, and that is a little bit more of a discussion about the centers. We briefed you on that at the last meeting, including a description of the three types of centers that staff are proposing folding into the urban form framework, as well as, I believe, we went through a list of those candidate centers, so we'll talk a little bit more about that today. Hand it out at your places, fresh, hot-off-the-press land use map and zoning map. These, as we've been working throughout the last two, maybe even three years, on a growth strategy, growth concept, it's been in the form of those, what I call the brown maps, that had the high-rise, mid-rise, low-rise, and all of that. Those needed at some point to be translated into actual comprehensive plan map and a zoning map. So we've done a lot of work over the last month to try to do that translation. And anyways, we won't get into that discussion right away, but that's on this agenda, too, and then we'll jump into design and development goal alignment. So urban form, we went through this, went through the urban form goals and policies. What's in your packet is the same set of goals and policies from last meeting. I think the commission mentioned that they were continuing to review and marinate on those goals and policies, so wanted to see if there was any more follow-up, but we'll go through really quickly here. The overarching vision that was proposed for the urban form element, walkable, livable, safe, and city, and more there. The urban form element scope, this is drawn from a set of visions and scopes and as part of the overall structure of the proposed structure of the comprehensive plan. We've got a slide coming up. Yep, here it is. The macro, meso, micro distinction here. Allison.[395.12][395.12](Laughter). I was struggling with this just today and had Allison re-explain it to me. The part that I had difficulty with is the relationship between the meso level and the micro level, and don't the design and development element and goals and policies inform the zoning code? And so I think that is still part of it, but, oh boy, yes, go ahead. I'm not even going to try to paraphrase it.
Macro level at the urban form is if you are at the 5,000-foot level, looking down, and what does the city look like? And we've got the grid, we've got the hillside, we've got the big block area of southern Everett, but what is the basic forms of the city that it takes? And how do we connect the different forms and where they are? So those are the overarching policies for it. It's the citywide framework for the urban form development. The meso is middle, and so when you get back down to earth and you're looking down a block or a streetscape, how are we making the policies that frame the development of that area? From those policies, we then get down to the micro or site level, because whenever you're doing a zoning review or a development regulation, you're looking at particularly an individual site or small group of sites to develop. And so that's where the policies from the middle, first of all, the land use as to what kind of land use it is, comes from the urban form. What are the policies that guide the development of that land use? And then how are we applying it on the zoning and development regulations? So it's from gross to fine through the system.
Got it this time?
So, catch him up. I think we mentioned this last time. The urban form element is most closely a descendant of the current land use element, and the design and development element is most closely a descendant of what we currently call the urban design element. So urban form goals and policies, again, those are the same as last month. We have been working on it ourselves. We've been collecting some external comments on it, and as you'll see in a moment, we've made quite a bit of progress on centers and maps. Wanted to turn it to give a chance to the commission. We have a couple of areas that we're looking at that I can get into. Maybe I'll just start with that, actually. There's a section on Metro Everett. This is kind of related to centers. We had a long staff workshop today where we went through a lot of the urban form design and development, the same kinds of things that we're talking about today. So it set us up really well for this discussion. One of the points of that discussion was the Metro Everett Subarea Plan. It's a 2018 subarea plan that was pretty transformative for the city's approach to downtown Everett, building on previous planning efforts, of course. I don't know that we had really settled on how that plan was going to integrate with the comprehensive plan so far. We arrived at at least a working proposal this morning, which would be that the Metro Everett, I think all along, we've considered Metro Everett to be pretty well-planned and recently planned. A lot of resources and a lot of effort went into it. 2018 is not that long ago. We're focusing this comprehensive plan update in the scope on citywide issues and housing specifically. Metro Everett Subarea Plan continues to be in effect, and what we were thinking today is that we would continue to rely on that plan for shaping the subarea of the Metro Everett core. We have reviewed it, and some pieces of it are kind of like an action plan, and they've already been implemented. That's okay. There's a date on it. We know that some aspects of it have already been implemented. Others are enduring policies, and they seem like the right ones, and we didn't find much fault with them. Be happy to share that plan around so that others can take a close look at that. The result of that is trying to avoid duplication of policies, so we have a section in the urban form element with three policies on Metro Everett. You have 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. We're thinking maybe we just delete those for now and rely on that subarea plan for the policies for Metro Everett. That said, there's also a lot of policies about broader centers, which include those other categories of community hubs and neighborhood nodes. And those sets of policies that apply to all centers, Metro Everett included, would be proposed to maintain, and we'll see how they evolve. That was one kind of change that we're looking at. We've got a set of notes for potential rewording of other policies. And then industrial lands is one that we need to add into here, so we're working on developing a set of industrial land policies. Part of that also touches on centers. With our Southwest Everett Manufacturing Industrial Center, it is a Puget Sound Regional Council designated, regionally important manufacturing center. It is shared between Everett and Snohomish County. Some of it is in the county jurisdiction, some of it is in Everett. The last plan that we have is getting a little bit old. It's been many years since we've done a comprehensive plan for it, and under the PSRC requirements, Puget Sound Regional Council, we need to do a new plan. So we are scoping that for next year and trying to work in all of the requirements in the center's planning checklist for that manufacturing industrial center into the overall comprehensive plan, and then we'll develop a more targeted subarea plan under separate cover. And you'll see this in a few slides as a proposed action for the comp plan to put that down on paper, that we'll get that done pretty soon. I think that's, is there anything else you can think of for things that we've worked on, goals and policies-wise? Any questions, comments, proposed revisions from the Planning Commission on the urban form stuff? Otherwise, do not fear, we have plenty more slides to go through.
Slides.
Okay. I think this was describing the policies.
Those are describing the policies.
Okay. Actions. I think in the set that we gave you last month and in this one, we're having a set of actions in most or all of the elements. Actions are discrete work program items mainly for the first five or so years of the planning Here is a set of proposed actions for the urban form element, and all of them are around subarea planning. I think we've communicated that we would be doing subarea planning for the light rail station areas in the coming years. We'll need to update the Metro Everett Subarea Plan once we know a little bit more about the, once we know a little bit more about where the light rail station is going to go, more than a little bit more, once we know where it's going to go. And I just mentioned the Southwest Everett Industrial Center Subarea Plan, and I'm realizing that I forgot one of our urban, no.
Community hubs.
Community hubs, thank you. Which is the North Broadway one, so we'll add that to the list of proposed actions. Timing on this, I think, is, first is that Southwest Everett Industrial Center. We are being asked sternly by Puget Sound Regional Council to get on with that, so we'll do that as soon as possible. The other three are, implicate light rail station areas, four, excuse me. Three of the four implicate light rail station areas, the fourth being the one that I just forgot again. Those light rail station areas, we are working towards, Sound Transit is working towards a preferred alternative in about six months, this winter. Preferred alternative is not set, and a record of decision, which will be kind of the final word on which of the alternative locations, is scheduled for 2027. We're tentative right now, but it seems like you would best do your subarea planning once you know where the station is going to go exactly. In some cases, at Airport Road, for instance, it's one side or the other of the road. Other places, it's more of a significant difference. So we were thinking that Southwest Everett first, and then the other three potentially waiting until 2027, but we may want to get some of that work done earlier as well. Any thoughts on the actions or other stuff you would like to tell us to do? Or we would like to tell ourselves to do? I think we covered this a month ago. We've got three tiers of centers that we're looking at. The Metro Everett is already a designated regional growth center, the highest order, one of metropolitan center, and like I said, we've got a solid subarea plan for that. We have never, as far as I know, designated second and third tier centers in Everett, so this would be a new one. The middle one, community hubs, aligns well with, actually kind of as countywide requirement that we look at designating countywide centers. There is a connection to transportation funding, and there's a connection to countywide planning policies and multi-county planning policies around that, and an encouragement to go kind of one step further in building up central places that can be accessible to folks throughout the urban areas in the region. So we've got the community hubs is the name for that middle tier, and then neighborhood nodes would be the smaller, local-only, and more neighborhood-oriented centers.
Yeah, with the neighborhood ones, I mean, I just kind of understand the community one on the funding and transportation. I guess what would, I guess the neighborhood nodes, what kind of treatment would they get more specifically?
Sort of a dieted version. I'm sorry. Sort of a dieted version of a community hub, but more locally scaled. So one of the things that I've been doing over the last week or so is looking at all of the neighborhood business zones and seeing which ones of those would become neighborhood nodes and/or just not be designated neighborhood business, and figuring out how we can best accommodate. So there are some that have, that obviously have businesses, but they're adjacent to residential, and the opportunity in the neighborhood nodes, and I've got a couple of images in there, that would maybe provide for the development of residential on top of it. Instead of just being a convenience store, it could potentially redevelop into a corner store with residents on top or whatever. So it's just a very, very much a scaled-down version, but the ability to walk and get some services in a localized area. Whereas the community hub would be on a bigger scale and might include a supermarket or whatever, whereas the neighborhood node wouldn't go to that extent.
We've got a little bit more on that topic, and if you didn't cover size, I think in general, the community hubs would be larger in area, and the neighborhood nodes would be smaller.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just, it seems odd that they would be on the major corridors coming in. I would think they would be more intense, so having a small neighborhood node.
Well, part of the reasoning for them on Evergreen is that if we named every single intersection on Evergreen, to provide concentration or get anything of scale developed at what we are calling the community hub would not occur, because it would be so diluted across, and we wouldn't get what we need. But by saying that that intersection is still important and it still provides stuff for the area immediately around there, it would be, that's what it is at the moment. And those are all, at this point in time, up for negotiation. I mean, we could name them all, we could name none of them, you know, kind of thing. But when we look at what is along Evergreen, I mean, there are certain intersections that are definitely higher concentrations of development, 41st Street, Casino Road, or whatever, but then there's some that are smaller concentrations. And at the last meeting, there was a mention of 50th being an important one, and right now, there really isn't much there, but it is an important crossroads. And so that's where, you know, it's all up for conversation. I mean, this is a draft for that reason. And I'm agnostic on the whole subject as to which ones, so.
Commissioner Ballard, you really put your finger on the thing that I didn't quite have language for, but it looked odd to me, because when I'm thinking neighborhood nodes, like for example, the one that is on Madison and Evergreen, I would think that the neighborhood node piece would be more like on Madison and Beverly. So I guess it's kind of a, I had a, I envisioned a different focus based on the term neighborhood node, and maybe it was just a different interpretation.
Well, it's hard to think about how to look at it, right? Are we trying to encourage a better place for it to be, or are we trying to support what's already kind of growing there? And then, you know, and of course, then you have things that are popping up all over the place, so are we wanting that to kind of change and group together differently?
I mean, we're talking 20 years out, and so the answer is sort of yes. I mean, I hate to say that, you know, we're going to pick one because it's organically, not pick it because it's organically growing, and that is a perfectly logistical thing, and then say, oh, but we're going to, you know, two blocks over is more important or something. I, you know, that's why I'm saying, I'm agnostic on this subject. If there is something that's already starting to germinate, let's use that foundation. But if there isn't something there, and it's just, we're putting it there because there's a bus rapid transit stop, which is part of it, that doesn't necessarily make sense. It doesn't make it better, it doesn't make it worse, but is that the correct thing? And so, and if we were to say that we were going to give all of them the community hub designation because they are on transit and they do have some services, where are we putting our efforts? And obviously, we don't have the bandwidth to put our efforts on the 11 miles of Evergreen Road.
So then the transits, so one of the benefits really wouldn't be transit, because it's kind of, I'm assuming that it's already going to be prioritized during that, along that route. So then the benefits to those areas then would be more aggressive zoning allowances, right? Or would it, or could it be sidewalks to?
It's zoning, it's zoning and sidewalks and creating a sense of place in there.
I do have a section on what might it mean to be a center. So let's.
So you can, if you just go back to the one before, the community hubs, you can see that the density and the scale is bigger than go on to the neighborhood nodes. And so much more small-scale, more the neighborhood crossroads type things. And yes, Evergreen does not fit that, but, and I know that, but I don't have another way of trying to figure out, I mean, if you've got another system, I'm happy to hear it. But I, it was just a way of trying to figure out a way to say that, yes, it's a place, but it's not the place.
Because that example that you just gave is exactly why I was envisioning a neighborhood node being closer to Madison and Beverly-type situation rather than Madison and Evergreen.
Right.
A lot of these purple circles are on land that we've zoned in this zoning map for 15-story developments, so it is, there is a little bit of a mismatch there.
And that's just another one showing a redevelopment of a site, and it's a small mixed-use one in Portland. It's an old, it's called the Pepsi Blocks, because it was the old Pepsi Bottling Company. And so they are taking the, some of the existing buildings, but building a whole series of mixed-use in there. And this one is interesting, because the street connection across is a vunurf. It's not a transit street, it's not a traffic street, but a vunurf has the opportunity to still get trucks in and out. Usually, there are bollards up that get moved, so that they can still get their supplies in. And it does have streets all the way around, but it provides the connectivity. And so something like that could be done at one of the sites that might be a neighborhood node, but it's a little bit more contained or something to that effect, so it's a little bit less of a scale.
Okay, I think we're, we've got quite a bit more on this topic, so we'll continue to flush this out, I think. Here's the policies in the centers, community hubs, and neighborhood nodes section of the proposed urban form element. Couple of the themes you see here, and this is something that we want to get right, and so think about what it, what centers we have, and are these the right policies for them, and what centers we want, and maybe, maybe the policies have some different words or something. 2.8 there, I think, is the one that mentions neighborhood nodes specifically, but for the most part, these apply to all the different types of centers. So focus on investments to support these places, prioritizing community services in community hubs, enabling healthy and affordable food, providing for concentrations of development, so a connection to the zoning and land use maps. That they be compact, safe, attractive, and accessible places, multimodal transportation hubs, that small parks or plazas be provided, centers are connected to each other, and that we prepare and adopt future street plans. I really think of all three of these as being a focus for our efforts, for our investments, and for our expectations for development and for, and for public and city activities So what are some of the tools that we might be able to use to support and develop these centers? We've got the land use and the zoning maps. One thing that we have looked at, if you remember with the alternatives, we had the dispersed and the concentrated. Many of these centers are along the urban corridors, where in the dispersed alternative, it is low-rise zoning a couple blocks off of it, but in the concentrated alternative, it was mid-rise. Maybe within those centers or adjacent to those centers is one of the places where we do use the mid-rise zoning. Take 50th or Madison and Evergreen Way, for example. Right now, it drops down to the low-rise, maybe as a little bit more of a substantial place associated with that center designation. You match it with a little bit more height in the periphery of it. Public facilities and services, some of the policy language here encourages the prioritization of those to centers. I would think that if we had 100,000 for a crosswalk or for a public art or for something, that you would try to place that in centers first. It's the kind of thing that can catalyze and support the development. We may prioritize some of the operating services that the city does into these places. We have development regulations, which have different incentives and regulations and restrictions that we can apply to centers. And I'll go through a series of them that we currently have on the books for Metro Everett, and maybe that's a helpful analog for what centers could be, although on a smaller geographic scale. We've been working, I think I've mentioned this to the Planning Commission before, we're in, I think it's the third year of the Model Code Partnership Work Program, which is a Federal Transit Administration grant to Everett, Snohomish County, Lynwood, and Sound Transit, to develop best practices and advance best practices around transit-oriented development in the station areas, and to as much as possible align the policies and regulations between the three jurisdictions, so that you have kind of a cohesive Everett link extension. We're in the final stages of that, and one of the last products that the consultant team supporting this effort is putting together is a TOD toolkit, a Transit-Oriented Development Toolkit. We've received an early content package, and we're working on comments back to them, which will turn eventually into guidance for Everett Snohomish County. which will turn eventually into guidance for Everett, Snohomish County, and Linwood for our station areas. The focus is on the light rail station areas, but it seems to us that what is good for a light rail station area is usually going to be good for other types of centers. We went through the entire eighty-nine pages of this early content package today, trying to think of which of these would make sense in all centers, only light rail station areas, or in like the full extent of our mixed urban zone, or what its equivalent might be in the future, which would be all along Evergreen Way and Broadway, for instance. Some of the regulations and suggestions are, I would say, very, very urban and quite restrictive to development, but would result in excellent placemaking. Maybe not the kind of thing that you could support throughout the entire corridor, so the type of thing that would make sense within centers. For the most part, we didn't see much that would only make sense next to a light rail station, that wouldn't make sense next in one of these designated centers that usually overlap the bus rapid transit, at least, transit station. I won't try to summarize all eighty-some pages of that, but we will work that into a briefing to you as soon as we can. Here's a listing of all of the regulations that are in our current plan, not plan, our existing development regulations that apply only to Metro Everett. So all I did here is I went through all of the chapters of code and word-searched for Metro Everett, and these bullet points summarize what those differences are. Working through most of these with staff, we think that most of these would also be appropriate to apply to community hubs and neighborhood nodes, maybe with some amendment, and maybe there are some of them that are really only appropriate for downtown Everett. But this gives kind of an idea of the types of things that we might apply to centers, including neighborhood nodes, that would not necessarily be appropriate to apply citywide. Automobile drive-through facilities are limited. You probably don't want to kick them out of all of Everett, but it might make sense to have places that are more focused on the pedestrian. These types of things are also a natural way to limit the number of centers because there's maybe only so many places that, that we want to tolerate such restrictions. In Metro Everett, they are limited to only the blue hatches mainly in the industrial areas and right around I-5, so it's not prohibited in all of Metro Everett, but definitely most of it. There's a whole list of uses that are restricted on the ground floor. Maybe these are specific to downtown Everett in some of the context in this particular place and would not be appropriate to extend to other centers. But again, this is just a listing of everything that says Metro Everett on it. Clinic, social service, food bank, surface parking is a principal use, religious facilities, veterinaries, and private clubs. The common thread for most of those is less of active uses and, well, as we talked through in the birthing centers, so it's exactly that set of regulations. What's this one on the bottom?
Setbacks.
Setbacks and plazas and four courts. So there's a lot about bringing buildings to the street and then enhancing them with things like plazas and defined entries. In nineteen oh nine, all development outside of Metro Everett is, requires a five-foot setback, upper-floor step-back for every ten feet up, I think. Makes for a total pyramid shape if you were to get to any sort of height outside of Metro Everett. So you could call that a requirement outside of Metro Everett or a relaxed requirement in Metro Everett. Staff are not, we've heard overwhelming criticism for the upper-floor step-backs, I should say, and are planning to propose to significantly pull the back on those.
So did you say it's a five-foot step-back every ten feet in elevation?
I think so, yeah.
So every floor needs a step-back?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, I would criticize that, too.
It is a literal.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
I made a model in SketchUp, it looks very, I mean, it's textured.
And it results in an incredibly expensive building.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah. Not that many places currently get that high outside of Metro Everett, so that's part of it. If it's only seven stories, then you'd have different options, but still, it's, we found that to be problematic. Finished floor limited to six inches above grade, some of these get very detailed, but that's one of them. Main entrance must face the street, courtyard, or plaza. Entire width of main entrances shall incorporate weather protection, so some of that doesn't necessarily apply outside of Metro. There are regulations on recessed entries and regulations on plazas and four courts. Minimum building heights. We have minimum heights in Metro Everett of between two and four floors, depending on what classification of street you are. I think four floors on a TOD designated street and two floors elsewhere, so no single-story buildings can be built in Metro. That could be one of the ways to encourage more concentrated growth in the centers, but maybe would not be appropriate along the entire length of our urban corridors. There's reduced parking within centers, that would seem to be a reasonable way to go. And parking, surface parking lots need to be set back quite far from the street. What you do with that extra space is up to you. Hopefully, you put it with a building, but I guess it could be landscaping or something. But that's specific to Metro Everett. So those are, the first bit were some general concepts, the last bit were some very specific ones, and in the middle of that are the recommendations that are evolving out of the Model Code Partnership. Some combination of all of that, starting with the policies, would be what it would mean to be a center. So imagine for those neighborhood nodes, if all of those things applied, then you would be prioritizing more of a concentrated urban mixed-use, and maybe there's even farther we could go on some of them. But I think the big difference between the neighborhood node and the community hub, maybe there's some of them that start to apply only to the higher-order centers, but then also the neighborhood nodes would be quite a bit smaller in area, so maybe it's only a block or two around a central point that has these requirements, whereas a community hub, it may be a full, I'm not sure how big a square mile is, that's probably too big.
So this is, this is where it feels a little weird to me that the neighborhood nodes are all along the major corridor of Evergreen Way. I guess I'm struggling to understand if that's where our centers and our, that's where all of our centers are essentially, is along those major corridors, our community hubs, our neighborhood nodes, they're all on that major roadway. So why do we need to differentiate between, I guess that they're, they're all there, why would we need different guidelines for a community hub versus a neighborhood node when they're all on this same major transit corridor?
Well, there are neighborhood nodes off of that corridor.
But very few.
There are.
The majority of them are on that major transit corridor.
Mm-hmm.
Here's one that I've been thinking about as both a policy for centers and a, probably a limiting factor for centers is, and this is maybe more definite than it would need to be, but every intersection is signalized or otherwise able to be crossed by pedestrians. You're not going to do that all along Evergreen Way, but in certain places, you want them to be more walkable and friendly. I can't remember if I've mentioned this example to you before, but taking a page out of the Rural Town Centers and Corridors Work Program, Highway two oh three goes through Duval, and it's fast, and it's sixty miles an hour, and then you get to, I think it's Duval Incarnation, and it's a welcome to Duval, hit twenty-five miles an hour, stop signs, people crossing, but not that much farther you're along on your way. And I could envision something like that on Evergreen Way, and that's what the neighborhood nodes are doing. But then there's other things, the community hubs, there's only three of them, and those are, they feature light rail stations, they feature hospitals and colleges. I think they would be a order of magnitude more significant than the neighborhood nodes. But let's keep thinking about that.
That, I think, helps me clarify the vision a little more in my mind, but we're not Carnation or Duval, so.
No, 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 only the, the concept of differentiating a corridor rather than having, I think there's room for improvement on the, you know, Highway ninety-nine has a lot of, is somewhat similar all the way from Canada to Mexico, you know? And so, having it more lumpy has benefits.
I like the idea about the walkable intersections at certain junctures along the way. In thinking about the controls you mentioned, the idea there obviously is to inspire higher density in those areas by creating floors or minimums. If that's not associated with also incentives, I think what ends up happening is all the missing teeth along the way get built to the same height as everything else, so that gets filled in first. So I would say, you know, when you're thinking about controls, think about incentives, so you're forcing the outcome you're looking for, not just squashing what might otherwise happen there naturally.
Sure, right. Yeah, a lot of those things we just talked over are restrictive on development, and there are some incentives that we have. We have a multifamily tax exemption that applies all along Evergreen Way. I don't think we want to restrict that to centers, but we could, that would be a powerful incentive there, now that we're balancing that with the need for housing throughout. But that's one example, and maybe there are some others that we could look at, too.
The other thing that strikes me in looking at these maps and looking at the data at the bottom of each slide, we should be giving some thought to how the transit hub might affect Metro Everett, whether the station's located here or one block there. I think that needs to be a consideration. The other thing that I, I don't think we've talked about here in this body is the proposed stadium. It's within Metro Everett, it's ten to twelve acres or something of that magnitude. It is, has the potential for probably the most attractive TOD development once the station goes in. How does that relate to the planning that's going on with this process and with Metro Everett? And does it end up coming before this body, or is it just a separate process altogether?
I think it's a separate process altogether, so where we're at with that is the draft environmental impact statement is released and out for public comment, so folks can learn about the pros and cons of the two alternative locations that we're looking at. I know the, I don't know that we were planning to bring that decision to the Planning Commission. I think thinking about it in the context of the existing Metro Everett planning framework is something that's, that's being done. I think you mentioned a tough trade-off there and one that there's, you could probably find support for both, locate major, major entertainment facilities and drivers of patronage in a center, but also use centers for redevelopment and lots of small buildings and blocks and The decision, I believe, will be made before this comprehensive plan is adopted. I'm not exactly sure, but I think they're working on a month-to-month schedule.
It just seems like with a project of, of that scale, both footprint, but also dollars and how it might affect how downtown works, how Metro Everett works, given the other projects that come before the Planning Commission, one would think that that would be a project that the city council would want the Planning Commission to at least discuss.
Sure, sure, yeah, I'll pass that along.
We did discuss the stadium in light of the light rail station extensively at a meeting last week. So we were looking at what the implications were for the potential stadium project and the, the downtown station and how they can fit, not fit, what the implications are, whether the station needs to move or whatever. So it's a consideration. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but I will pass that along. There's definitely some implications to our current and long-range planning from that decision.
Regardless of where the stadium ends up, I mean, because you're going to, you're going to have either a stadium and a location and going in and one not being used, and then you've got a large site there, too. Or one being redeveloped, and then how do we think about the other site?
Correct, yeah, I was circling those areas along Forty First and Broadway as well. I mean, these are all considerations that need to be thought through in making ultimately a decision. I haven't read the draft EIS, but hopefully, part of what's being evaluated is not just the opportunity that's being created by a new stadium downtown, but what's also being traded off, because this is potentially high-value land, which would generate significant property tax and really create the ability to increase the number of hours that people are active downtown.
Right, sure, yeah. Okay, so you have this map, what I, I thought I'd work out our graphics card and just look at each one of the centers, and if there's anything that comes to mind about them, at some point in this exercise, we would need to draw lines around it. If we're going to go with a center designation that is meaningful or regulatory, this is the North Everett Potential Community Hub. What do you want, I've tried, I've drawn a couple lines, of course, as a, as a good planner, I can't help but break out the Sharpie from time to time, and you've got a hospital, you've got a community college, you've got a university, you've got a park district, you've got a wetland, you've got housing, you've got a historic district, you've got a golf course. What goes in, what goes out, how gerrymandered is it? Is it okay to have parks and lower-density, stable areas in between, more dynamic and changing and growing areas? So we'll have to figure out a way to approach proposing lines around it. And this is just to zoom in on the zoning map that you have to think about, would there be anything different that we would do about, you know, we've been working off the same playbook for these land use and zoning maps for a couple of years now, and does the center designation, does any of this, what it means to be a center, change that? Metro Everett, you know? Most of the zoning and heights and where those boundaries are, if not all of them, are in our existing plan. The kind of wedding cake stair step-down is a feature of our current height maps, and it's one that we thought would best to keep going forward. Little bit tough to see with the, with the parcel lines in here, but the, it's not a, when Metro Everett and, and some of those heights were established, they really didn't know where the light rail station was going to go. They didn't even know, it might have been on Colby, it might have been on Broadway, it might have been on the freeway. With the three alternatives that we're at now, there's definitely some, the highest heights are meeting the light rail station, I think that's what you're getting at with the need to take a look at that. So we may not want to wait that many years until we do that, and again, we'll have a preferred alternative likely identified this winter. So this would be one, I believe.
This is a node.
This is a node. Mid-rise you do see on the right because it's currently mid-rise, but on the left side, the west side, it's low-rise, so if it's a node, is that what potentially drives additional height on the periphery of these nodes? And the circle is an eighth of a mile diameter, I think? Eighth, quarter, half?
I believe it's an eighth, yes, as I recall.
Does it need to be defined by a radius?
No.
Because of.
It's just, it's.
Oh, no, yeah.
Yeah, I understand, good. That's, that's good to hear, because I, I think that when we're talking about nodes throughout the city, you know, part of the delineation of what the perimeter should be is likely implicated by the fabric today.
Absolutely.
You know, the networks, the, you know, how the parcels work, are there significant buildings, topo, things like that.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, I expect a polygon for each of these, and how we get there will involve you, but I don't know that we've figured out the pathway to that, other than my Sharpie marker and others probably do. Fiftieth, Fifty-second, this is one we talked about a lot a month ago. So you'll see this fairly familiar pattern down Evergreen Way, and so, you know, most of what you see and, and see the watercolors about centers are very center, like a, like a bullseye. Ours, if they're going to be along these corridors. Ours, if they're gonna be along these corridors, are one stop on a linear system. So again, are the streets, the Vesper, Wilmington, Delaware and Alpine, would you bring those up to mid-rise because this is a center? Would you not, but maybe change some of the design requirements even at the low-rise scale? Something else? Not include those areas that are not high-rise in the center? All questions? Here's one that is not on the major arterial showing that there are different ways to imagine the centers, but think of all of those lists of regulations and potentially those would all apply here as well. Would that be a good fit? I think probably for the most part. This is definitely a smaller one in a very different setting than the others. It's also not as tied to high-capacity transit and transportation connections. It does feel more like the other kind of neighborhood node that maybe the words neighborhood node imply. We had one on the other end of Muckelteo Boulevard here, right near the edge of the city. It was a neighborhood business node, which is another reason for that kind of connection in our minds. That didn't last too long with staff as a recommended neighborhood node. So our suggestion is that that one is gone starting now. Just doesn't meet any of the criteria.
And disappeared.
That's right. Yeah. Of course, this is a work in progress, but it just didn't seem to really fit many of the criteria there. One convenience store in the other half of the neighborhood business node was developed with townhouses recently. Here's, yes?
So, sorry, for the, so for the one that you deleted and the one previous, I don't know if you've taken a look at the transit results after they moved, I think it's the three line around West Muckelteo there. They added like 1,000 riders a month, moving it to its new path for that line, which is crazy. So we might want to take a look at, you know, that node and then adding somewhere something along that new transit path, because I think we've got demand there for, you know, potentially another neighborhood, neighborhood node.
And for a center like this, I was gonna say, most of our kind of high-capacity stuff is relatively fixed. We've got the swift stations that we're gonna have. We're planning new ones in North Broadway. Light rail is pretty much fixed, but something like this is somewhere that a policy preference for enhancing transit could help drive city resources that direction. Thank you. Madison and Evergreen. This one is the intersection of one of the secondary, the connectors, the connector arterials. This one is, I think, more of a true crossroad than maybe 50th, but I both operate similarly. This one is pretty close to the Casino Road larger community hub. Another interesting exercise of where might you draw lines around it to capture? The idea is that it all be kind of walkable within itself, so it's not so big or gerrymandered that you couldn't get from one part of it to another. Once there's light rail underway, what do you do with the neighborhoods to the northwest and the southeast? That must be X Marks the Spot Airport Road and Evergreen Way. We only have direct jurisdiction over one piece of that. You can see on the bottom left where the county has designated, and the county intends to apply and designate this as a countywide center, so it would make sense for us to match it on our side. That tiger stripe, orange and black hatch is the light rail community designation, which is their highest level kind of urban core type of land use designation. Everett Mall, lot of discussion about this one among staff. It is obviously a significant destination and a significant concentration of retail and services and amenities. Lot of development potential, a lot of underused land, unclear. One major property owner owns the vast majority of it, unclear what their vision is and if it is consistent with a center type of a vision. I think what we've got it in here is a neighborhood node that maybe it wouldn't be appropriate for that full community hub. If you were going to, I would think as a center designation, you probably wouldn't have a lot of room in the regulations and policies for like big-box stores surrounded by surface parking. I don't know that that is in the vision either for the property owner, or if there's even that much of a market to build new big-box on surface parking, but that would be a conversation we would need to have. Are we, as a city, wanting to lead a pivot to a more urban-type redevelopment of this suburban mall area? Or is it functioning well the way it is and there is a need in the city for a more auto-oriented, freeway-oriented, kind of still significant concentration of activity, but maybe not every building to the street, small block lengths and high intense design? Silver Lake, get some, get some attention here. And so the circle is a little bit, it's north of the shopping center there, but it doesn't have to be.
Shopping centers all along there.
Yes.
That was actually gonna be my question, because there are shopping centers there, but the main one is really a little bit south of that. I wish Commissioner Sullivan was here. She knows that area quite well. I'd love to hear her perspective on that particular one, because my perspective is it should be a bit south.
Sure. And there's a current transit line and a planned transit line. One of the farther down the line future swift lines goes near here. We won't do anything with this until Commissioner Sullivan's involved. And then what we don't have on the map as a center, stretching from corner to corner on this image, are a couple potentials. Didn't even mention it throughout all this, the Evergreen Way revitalization plan, which does sort of set the stage for this concept and is reflected in our existing zoning map. You can see a skipping of mixed urban zone and business zone, which is a little bit more auto-oriented and almost light industrial with mini-storage allowed in the B-zone, but back to the more urban style in the MU-zone. So there's a couple light rail swift stations in here. You've got a tangle of major transportation corridors. A lot of people live here, there's a lot of jobs here, there's a lot of services here. But it is also fairly challenging with its parcelization and its street network. But that was one of the things that staff were talking about, is this distribution a little bit too focused on the 40s to 70s in our streets, 40th Street to 70th Street, where from Casino Road to Airport Road, there are no designated centers, but it is bookended by two major community hubs. So maybe that's a reason to focus more on those big ones and not to say that lots of great things won't happen. It's not, you don't have to be a center for great things to happen. This image, which I think includes a hundredth, reminds me on the Everett Mall Way that we have a, we'll talk transportation in a couple of, I think next month we'll get into transportation, but our existing transportation plan has a project that would extend a hundredth underneath I-5 and connect 19th to Points West. I feel like that would be a significant change to the feel of the Everett Mall area and would be potentially a catalyst for some, for reimagining there. How likely we are to get that funded is a different story, but we'll talk about that Okay, that was, that was this kind of centers and that was the full program on center. So a little bit on what it means, a little bit on each of the ones that we have initially designated, and if you have any kind of further comments, those were great feedback already, but if there's anything else you'd like us to chew on as we take the next step on this, we'd love to hear.
For the northernmost community hub, you mentioned hospital. Did you mention consideration of the college and expansion of the college? And, okay, maybe I just, my brain didn't quite hear that. But that's a consideration as to what other types of options might be beneficial there with that being expanded.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's definitely a hub of activity. Okay, I don't think we have a whole lot on corridors, other than to say that that's another kind of framework that we're working with. These could be designated, these could have different policies. We know that the Port of Everett is, has a specific amendment request in for this periodic update to designate a freight corridor, which this would be the West Marine View Drive to Rucker to 41st to I-5, their main freight route from the port to the interstate network. And the idea there from the port is that you would have both impacts on the street itself, maybe deprioritizing a little bit, active transportation uses to avoid conflicts with heavy freight hauling, and then maybe outside of the right-of-way as well and some standards to increase compatibility of development with the freight corridor. That's something that we are considering, and we will be asking for some advice on that.
Does that include the flattening of those corners?
There is a project that we're in design on to look at different options for the corners. There have been in, over the years, a couple of, I've heard from the big Kahuna, which would turn it to like a complete diagonal and go through several blocks to a more modest kind of curve enhancements. I think we're at half Kahuna max right now, or leaning towards the less disruptive to the street grid. I think Public Works has a page up with some of the options that they're looking at, and they're in kind of a design and scoping phase of that project. It's Wash dot funded design work at least.
I know there was a multifamily project that was planned for the, because it's the southwest corner of that intersection.
That you submitted.
Yeah, and so is that, is that moving forward?
Yeah.
So at least that corner will remain
Correct.
Close to a 90-degree corner.
Correct, yes, that's correct. And the port was comfortable, they did the auto-turn analysis of truck turning movements and was comfortable. We had already done a project there to make for a pretty wide turning radius, and they were comfortable that they didn't need more. So that's one example, but you see others, Bicycle Boulevard, it's an open space where we may have some specific policies around those. Land use and zoning maps, you've got them in front of you. What do we want to say about these? The relationship between the two maps is, the land use map is in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is harder to change than a rezone. This means that often a proponent of a rezone will kind of stick within that comp plan designation. In our current, in our current land use map, we have multifamily, single-family, commercial, mixed-use metropolitan center and industrial. We would propose a focus, there are different ways that you could arrange the comprehensive plan map, including having it exactly the same as the zoning map on one extreme or having it very, very general on the other extreme. What we have here is kind of a blend of what we have now and a little bit of a simplification of it. It focuses on uses rather than scale. So the pink is mixed-use, and that's where lots of commercial activities would be allowed in addition to residential. The yellow would be residential. You see a lot more distinction in the zoning map. You would not need under this setup a comprehensive plan amendment to go from low-rise to mid-rise or from neighborhood residential to low-rise, whereas currently some of those moves, you would need a plan map amendment. You would, on the other hand, need a map amendment to go from mid-rise residential only to a mid-rise mixed-use commercial allowed kind of a setup. Otherwise, this is all built off of the same maps that we've been working on, dispersed alternative with a few changes. The implementing zones for each one of these, residential would be the, residential would be the neighborhood residential, neighborhood residential constrained, UR3 and UR4 would be implementing zones. Mixed-use implementing zones would be mixed-use, mixed-use high-rise, and maybe mixed-use light industry. And then industrial would be the three industrial zones. So that would be the relationship between the comprehensive plan map and the zoning map. Otherwise, most of what you see, all of what you see on the zoning map should be familiar from the low, mid and high-rise maps, just with more familiar names. We do not have the pink and red alternating mixed urban and business zone. Everything that is a business zone would be folded in along with the mixed urban zone into the mixed-use zone. There are very few differences between the business zone and the mixed urban zone, and it's mostly things like mini-storage and storage yards. It would be a decision that we'd have to make on what the role would be in the expanded mixed-use zone for those types of uses. Any thoughts or questions focusing on the relationship, the legend? This is an early draft, so there's surely gonna be some flaws or unintended pieces in here. That's a big city to look for. Big shout-out to Erica Harris, our GIS analyst, for tireless work on this. Spencer, sorry, that was a different. Okay, any thoughts on this? Otherwise, definitely chew on it, and we'll be back with this again. And then design development. We've got a vision, shorter than urban form. Everett's neighborhoods are inviting, attractive and functional for all people. The scope is the design of the city's built environment and its historic identity. And you've got the goal alignment worksheet. And that is the last slide, so we can linger on this if we want.
You might want to explain your yellows.
Yellow is key terms, just looking through it. So the middle, and it's, we have so many objectives in our current urban design element that it spills onto this back page here. But I just highlighted kind of what Everett's urban design objectives are in its existing comprehensive plan to look at maintaining or adjusting those for the new set of proposed goals. On the left, like the other goal alignment sheets, we've got the overarching regional goals from the state and regional perspectives. Design and development is one that's more left to local discretion than the other ones, so these overarching regional goals are a little bit more of a fuzzy connection to Everett because we're getting into the mesoscale. I know Karen did a lot of work on design and development, too. If there's anything or Alisan in the way of context, otherwise, yeah, take a look and see, are these the right goals, which is what we start with? And then we do, we have already been working on building policies around it. We'll have those ready for your next meeting. But if there's any suggestions or edits to the goals, we'd love to hear about that now. Clear convenience.
Yeah, for goal DD6, is, what do other people think about including not just diversities of ages and active mobility, but also including diversity of incomes? Would that fit in?
I think that's more in the healthy community. Because, I mean, in the design, I'm sorry, in the design of streets and scapes and everything, income levels don't necessarily impact a sidewalk design or a setback or an entrance to the same extent as the ability to get from A to B. Whereas healthy community is where we're going to look at more of the DEI type of thing and all of the community. And we are meaning to discuss that tomorrow at some point with many of our counterparts in community development. So as you look at the chapters in the, in the plan, we have sort of the introduction and then we have a chapter to describe who our community is, and then the next one is healthy community. Because I love Google word searches and everything else, but in our current plan, when you look for the word health, there are three things that we want healthy in the city of Everett right now. We want healthy trees, we want a healthy budget, and we want a healthy something else that has, none of them have anything to do with people. So we are turning things around so that it's more leaning towards that and that all feel welcome, all are able to be part of and participate in. And I think that's probably where it's better served, but really absolutely vitally important.
With regard to objective 8.5.7, recognize the importance of prime natural features. It includes water edges, ravines. Would it be appropriate, Commissioners, do you think, to include tree canopies in that?
That's in urban form.
Okay.
Because the natural, the built-in natural environment are all part of urban form, and so tree canopy and all of the ravines and the environmental standards are all in urban form.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, this is a question I don't have the answer to. This seems like a lot of goals to me, 16, and there's a lot of overlap or seeming overlap between a number of these goals. Is that considered what's best practice, is to have more rather than fewer? Or would it be easier to synthesize these down into, you know, more clearly defined components or topics that are later expanded upon?
I think it would, exactly what you're saying was kind of where my mind was going, because I think it would be easier to distill them down if they were collected into groups. Like there are different ones about bicycles, for example. If we could see all of them together, maybe we could determine if some of them didn't need to be there, we could consolidate them.
We can definitely take a look at that. One of the things that we have heard from Commerce is to keep things higher level and then our policies become a little bit tighter, but we don't, in the current comprehensive plan, we have things like remove dead trees, or trees in riparian edges should be cut to, or something to that effect. And they're saying, no, that's, goes into your standards or whatever, that's not into your policy level. So we're trying to keep them up, but we can definitely do another look through and see that we haven't duplicated.
Yeah, I think pulling out the major themes would be helpful from a reader perspective. I look at goal 12 and goal 14. Similar concepts, slightly different approach. And so there are probably other examples of that, you know, blending of concepts across goals that could be cleaned up a little bit.
I think some of it was leakage from the existing comprehensive plan, and I think as we went through all the objectives, tried to find a home for many of those concepts and, but I appreciate, the more tight and focused we are, the more effective the remaining policies and goals are, I think, so I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Finch, especially goal 14, that just seems like something that, why is that its own goal?
Yeah, we've had a couple of staff comments about that one, too. But screening, we have some screening requirements around outdoor storage, and I guess that's one that could potentially have a blighting effect, so maybe different wording, but there, maybe it's rolled into a higher level. There's one about transitions and you could maybe incorporate something in there.
Maybe this is, Commissioner Atkins' same question, but I guess, again, affordability and equity for the option to be able to buy homes instead of rent, I mean, or places, I just feel like that should be a goal in here. It should be in every lens of everything, but it's, we keep pushing it farther out and it should be in here.
It's in housing.
I think it should belong in here. I understand what you're saying, I just really disagree with you.
And that was kind of your response to the more we, the more we seek to make a beautiful city that's sometimes at odds with an affordable one, and both are goals that need to be balanced.
I agree, that's why it needs to be here, so every time you're looking at this, you
As we're drafting the goals and policies, this element includes historic preservation, as does our existing urban design and historic preservation element. Alyssanne, looking at it with fresh eyes, we had the joint meeting with the Historical Commission and did some work with the, with, directly with the Historical Commission on that historical element. I think two things have, we've evolved since then. One is getting a experienced historic preservation planner as our land, long-range planning manager, has brought some good perspective and some good experience in that regard. And then also, we've found it difficult to, we're doing more fresh looks at these goals and policies, as you're seeing. These are more rewrites than edits, and I think that earlier, the first element really that we brought through was more in the realm of edits than rewrites. So we are taking a look at a consolidation and a shrinking of the number of policies and goals around historic preservation. We have a meeting with the Historical Commission next week, and we want to talk that over with them first, and I think you can anticipate, well, you already see, I think, maybe fewer goals than was in that element when we looked at it last summer, early summer.
I don't know, I wasn't here.
Right, yep. I remember it was hot at Everett Station, it was unbearably hot, so it must have been summer. So expect that, but we'll have a conversation with the Historical Commission first. And it's not in the spirit of backpedaling on our commitment to historic preservation at all, it is about that efficiency and focus. So I think that's all we got, all we have, excuse me. As always, we'll have, we already have the urban form element and the other elements that we've gone through up. I think we're gearing up for a second round, so we've taken the comments that we've received on things like the housing element and urban form element, and I think we'll release a next draft of some of those online, probably not for a couple of weeks, and we have a meeting with you in two weeks from today. Is there anything that you would like us to look at in the realm of what we discussed today, other than what you've already told us for two weeks from today? We've got like one week for the packet, so there's not a ton that we can do, but there's a lot that we already have in progress that we'll try to package up. Design and development will be a focus, and if we're able, we will have a draft marineport element and an economic development element, which will start to ease us out of this kind of a land use focus. After those two more smaller elements, we will start talking transportation, which will be a pretty big topic. And then I think there's a couple other elements, the healthy communities one and a couple others, and then we will revisit all of this in more of a holistic manner. We also have a couple of briefings to put together for the council, and I think we'll focus on some of these sorts of things. We need to get back to middle housing. I'm going to stop listing things that we need to do, because there's a lot. But back to the question of if there's anything that we can provide for your next meeting, otherwise I think we'll continue this path down design and development.
Simple request, if we could get the packets a little earlier, that would be great.
Yes, Ayana would appreciate that as well.
If we're concluding that item, we have a final opportunity for public comment. Ayana, do we have anyone online?
No comments.
Okay, with that, we've completed our agenda and we are adjourned.